Here close.
Okay, we're back in session and with that, I believe uh. Uh, someone had a motion related to the closed session, is that where we do it? Chris, please.
So I would like to. Ask for consensus to have the Hinton Healthcare Foundation Board to bring a delegation to the June eighteenth. A regular council meeting regarding support of healthcare in Hinton.
Any comments or questions? Okay. Um. I'd like to call a vote then. Are we done it up? Okay, with that, could you register your approval or disapproval? Whatever you like. Have a favor. Okay, that's unanimous. Um, so with that, uh, we move on to um. I believe we move on to five one, two thousand twenty four Community Grant Spring Intake Overview, please.
Thank you, Chair. I will be taking over all issues items for today, but we have the uh. The least town liaison committee as a part of the work there, we just. We've taken this opportunity because I think it's been a while to just go through the terms of reference for the. Uh, I wouldn't say this is a significant change, but I thought.
I'm sorry, we're talking about five one now. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
My apologies.
Good evening. Maybe the this report before you tonight is to provide committee with a summary of the community grant applications in the spring twenty twenty four intake. As you can see from the table in the report, thirteen applications were received requesting just over eighty thousand dollars. The amount approved in the current operating budget for community grants for all of twenty twenty four is twenty six thousand seven hundred and three, so seven hundred and five dollars, sorry. And just by way of background, this amount represents thirty percent of the anticipated fine revenue uh from automated traffic enforcement. To be received in twenty twenty four. And those were tickets that were issued in prior years because of course the program suspended. Uh.
Could you say that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, sorry, those. Those revenues that I'm mentioning, the twenty six thousand budget came from automated traffic enforcement fines that were issued in prior years. Because of course the program is suspended.
Good.
Uh, the advisory committee, uh, the Hinton Grant Funding Advisory Committee. Has met as of today, three times to review and assess these applications, including a marathon evening meeting all of the defenders. And administration confirmed with the presenting groups whether or not they're able to complete their projects with partial funding. And although the level of partial funding was not at the time known. Most have said that they'll scale back their project to do whatever they can with any funding received. About a third of the groups that you see in the chart. Believe they may be eligible for a county recreation grant. And all have been encouraged to apply and just by way of perspective, the county will fund groups at uh post events for uh services in Hinton. Or Hinton based groups, provided that Home Minnesota also funds and it's a matching sort of limit on that. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Right. I don't have a question. I'm comfortable with the recommended action and like to make the proceed consensus that committee refer the matter. Of the twenty twenty four Community Grant Spring intake applications to a future regular meeting of council with recommendations. From the hint branding, grant funding advisory committee. Uh, and I've just been speaking to that really briefly. I appreciate the high level outline of what we're likely to see. And I'll save any detailed questions until uh the Grant Funding Advisory Committee puts together their their report.
Uh, thank you for that. While we're getting that up, I'll ask a question. Um, I'm a little curious as to why uh we didn't get the recommendation to do this all at once. Why are we spreading this over a couple of meetings?
So thank you and through uh the chair to the rest of the committee. Uh, in prior years, it's been a little difficult for council to take in the um. The the uh. All of the information about the committee, the committee's recommendation and the projects that are being proposed, all in one meeting. And so uh. Twenty twenty three, I believe, spring intake. Ca- uh, council had asked for preliminary review of the projects uh in advance. So that's, we did that once and then this is a second.
Thanks, Joel.
So just so I'm clear, we have thirteen applicants applying for over eighty thousand dollars worth of money. And we only have twenty six thousand dollars for the spring and fall intake.
That is correct. That is correct, yes.
And also you were saying that um a lot of these applicants have said. That partial funding would really assist them in their version.
Sorry, through the chair to the rest of the committee. That that's correct. They they said that they can still execute their projects, probably scaled back from what they've actually proposed in their applications. Um, to utilize any funding that they that they that they do receive, they'll first be matching that with their own resources.
Thank you.
Trevor.
Yeah, and and just a quick question to build up of council tailors. So when we do get the report, because I think in the past we only got the recommendations. But we didn't get the other projects of that, if I recall that um in the past reports, the reason being, because then we came back to. Council looking at, is there other things that we could have done? So that's the intent. So when we get the report, will it have all of these projects or just the ones that? The committee is recommending funding to.
Thank you through the chair to the rest of the committee. You'll get this essentially the same report.
Okay.
Uh replicated with the committee's recommendations, kind of somehow are they tabulated beside? So it'll be pretty easy to see their points, given their ranking, the amount they're recommending to grant. And yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Probably make it like one to thirteen.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question about the uh. Uh, partial funding comment, whether, you know, if that would tell. Was there? Any kind of restriction on the partial funding? I guess what I'm asking in a roundabout way is uh. Would it be beneficial for them if the grant committee was to recommend that they get? Five percent, everybody gets five percent of what five for? Is that actually going to be beneficial or is that?
So through the chair to the rest of the committee, so uh the the Grant Funding Advisory Committee is challenged to decide how best to to fund any or all of the applications. So there's been uh different practices by different uh committees members. Um, the committee is comprised every year, so it's different people that come forward. They are looking at the applications. They do have to compare all applications against the other applications. There isn't categories for, I don't know. Anything in particular, for example, events aren't just all compared with each other. So it's it's basically all in, everything gets compared, and then the committee has to decide how to fund that, to what degree. Um, and how to balance it between the applications. It's very challenging.
This. Didn't follow?
No.
Is this eighty thousand dollars for twenty six thousand dollars worth of money? Was this eighty thousand dollars for thirteen thousand dollars?
Uh, so one of the questions that the committee is going to have to decide on is whether or not they should. Only. Fund half of the. So only utilize half of the year's budget in the spring intake and then hold a fall intake, or if all of the funding would be dispersed in spring. In particular this year, because the the level of ask is so much higher than the budget. That and there is no, there is no policy yet that says that the funding is split. It does say that there, our policy does say that there is two intakes per year. Um. But again, the problem being that the funding, the budget is now so low that it becomes unrealistic to ask for more applications when you've got applications that you haven't funded. And that, so the program itself. Needs a review this year, and I've already asked the Grant Funding Advisory Committee if they'll participate in that. They're interested in doing that. So I think that that will be doing that and bringing it forward as soon as we can. By some.
Yeah, that's good to hear. The amounts are small and I do believe that a lot of our nonprofits are well organized, that we could get away with one allocation per year. Joan.
Are the applicants still asked to come in and present to the? The committee.
Thank you through the chair to the rest of the committee. They're given the opportunity, so the ranking is out of a hundred. If they do come and present, which is not really a presentation, but more of a Q and A and a meet and greet. Um, they get ten minutes and they can get an extra ten points. So some of them earn, you know. Something out of a hundred and tens for doing that. Not everybody presents. Mostly.
When I looked at the budget, I thought we had like eight hundred thousand dollars in the A T E reserve, is that correct?
So thank you, I did check on that today. The reserve is at about eight hundred thousand dollars. But the way the policy is currently written for A T E. The Hinton Grant Fund is only budgeted thirty percent of the expected revenue from A T E, A T E. Sorry, the expected net revenue from A T E in the year. So the reserve isn't something that we tap for. The budget for grant funds.
Okay, so what's the reserve for?
I'd have to look at the policy for that, uh, the A T E policy. Are there other aspects that are funded from that?
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Joining. Okay, with that, we move to the vote, we could. Thank you. It up. Hey, please vote in favor or of or this favor. Although in favor. We waiting for it. There's okay, there we go. That passed, that was unanimous. With that, now's the time to talk about five three, uh, the policing committee.
Thank you very much.
I'll continue where I left off. Um, but we have included on page twelve, if you know. Listing of all of the page twelve and thirteen, detail listing of all the changes that were taken. Uh, they are all. Once they're they're all very much a requirement of what that committee is involved in doing. Uh, and it just, we thought that we. We wanted to take the time to ensure that that reflected what we. What the intended purpose goes by council and what the committee thought that they were there to do. So it was, you know, it's just typing things up a little bit to making sure that we were as uh. You know, we had a, we all had a good understanding about what that committee was going to do to make sure that we had that. That reflected in the terms of reference. So if there are any questions about the terms of reference, I can ask. I can answer with possibly counselor McGoon as the council rep on that committee. For uh, Mayor Nissen, but. Uh, that's all I have on this one.
Let me scroll down.
Um, it sounds fairly small, but just from a logistics. And procedural perspective, when I was going through the attached, uh, attachment three. The draft by law eleven thirty dash one, um, one of the procedural items that we 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 had hiccups with. Is designated it, designating a chair. Uh, and so when I was looking through um. The the draft, the the proposed draft by law. The only place I saw chair mentioned was six, three. Um, that mentions a chair, but I didn't see anything delegating. Who was the chair unless I missed that?
Um, let me chair, let me look into this. I don't know if that refers as a stopgap to the council committee by law that has a process for establishing a chair or if we should have. That process included in there. I do remember maybe a conversation about this very topic, but uh. Uh, I'll have to get back to you, but I will uh. Ensure that we've addressed this for for the council meeting.
Sure.
I have a question, it's just something that struck me as uh. But uh. One of the number one things this thing does is community feedback to the Hinton R C P. Uh, there's only one counselor on it, the rest are administration. So. So. Seems like there should be more community or public if you're going to be doing community feedback. So, spoke anybody else's thought?
Uh, through the chair, the the mayor and one counselor, so there's two elected officials, and then a lot of it has to do with uh. Uh, complaints that we receive through hinted listens through uh. Through the other channels, so people may reach out, so uh, but we do have a two, two elected officials. But yeah, as well as some other agencies that would come on. Uh. Yeah, on a temporary basis that may have some input from the community as well. Like victim services.
Any more questions? Did anybody put a uh the recommended action? Yes. Right. Uh, you were first.
I'd like to seek consensus that uh, maybe you would refer the draft Protective Services Advisory Committee by law. To a future meeting of council for first reading as presented.
Any questions or comments?
That's perfect. Yeah, I I I'll be in support of this. I I really like the changes. Um, I like the involvement of the protective services part of it, because I know they've always been part of that, but. From a town's perspective, it is, you know, the R C P have their mandates and we have, you know, the discussion as to their. Their uh tools for the year, but including that protective services into it, which is regulated by the town, I think is really important. Uh, along with the other organizations too, but I really like how this is cleaned up and it's more clearer as to the. The intent of it, so looking forward to seeing this at regular, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, cool. So I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, just really briefly, for myself, participation in this committee or sort of the previous versions of it that existed. I think of all the versions I've participated in, this one has been my my favorite. I think it feels the most functional. I know previous to this, uh, we had utilized sort of like the the federal default version that the R C and P had utilized, that they utilized in different places. Um, and yeah, there was a lot more citizens sitting on that committee. But functionally, I found that actually there was less feedback. It was more just of a sit, receive information and then. Move on. I feel like the functionality of what we have going on right now is, uh, it's just more efficient, so thanks.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, move to the vote, please, Jen. Hey, you have the uh question there? Would you please vote for or against? Next. Beautiful. It passed unanimously. Can you move to five four junior force wardens license to use agreement, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'll turn this over to Mr.
Thank you, and through the chair to the rest of the committee. So the matter before you tonight is a request from the junior forest wardens of uh Hinton to association. To review um. They're sorry, their request for a longer lease, they're looking for to replace their current lease, which has two more years to go on it. And uh, replace it with a ten year license to use with the town for their occupation of five hundred and five fifty West River Road, which is essentially Athabasca Riverfront Park. Next. Uh, map is in your agenda package at page forty one, your agenda, to show you the area that we're talking about.
All right.
Just a quick question, has there been any other expressions of interest on those two parcels?
So this has not gone to open competition, or we've not advertised for proposals? Which had no inquiries that I'm aware of.
Sorry, if I can rephrase, Mr. Chair. I just, has anyone else approached the town about these particular parcels at any point?
It's my understanding is.
Sort of through the chair from uh nobody has approached me, I would probably ask planning, if not, that I'm aware of.
Uh, Trevor, please. Yeah, I think to move the committee to reach consensus to refer the matter of the settings of Junior Forest Wardens Association License to Use. Five hundred and five fifty West River Road for a ten year term to a future meeting of council, you know, if I can just quickly speak to it, um. A big part of this is for funding, uh, because it's going to be free up and they need a longer term. Um, I I'm a really good fan of the uh junior forest wardens uh. Work that's done, uh, it's benefited a lot of young kids, uh, you know, learning about our forestry uh and other things as well, so. I think this is a a great opportunity to extend that and get more funding uh to to that organization through the free us, so thank you.
Albert.
Mr. Chair, um, just a question regarding past agreements. How long have the terms been on that past agreement up to this point?
Thank you through the chair to rest of the committee. I believe they've been five years. I'd like the third one is five years.
Yeah, oh, well.
Please.
So. Ten years seems like a long time to agree that municipality. And uh, and it's and it's in the body. Is it a requirement of the free grant that the that the term be that long or is this or this free of? Define how long the the term needs to be.
And you do the rest, through the chair to the rest of the committee, Free has not expressed that. Their their only concern is that the current agreement is expiring about. A year after the um capital improvements will be made or at least still be underway. So no, they haven't specified that and certainly we can entertain other terms. For example, another option would be five years with a automatic five year renewal. But there is a termination clause. In these agreements.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Um. Clause fifty six, I don't understand that. Why would we indemnify them? Hold them harmless for anything? Well, they want to do that for us. You explain clause fifty six to me, please. Like, what's the point of it? They got insurance, you're supposed to have insurance. So what's that there, folks? Fifty six. Page thirty three. Eleven, page eleven of the agreement.
Just to make point, this is the old agreement that's currently on here, not the new draft one.
Okay, so that's not going to be in the the maneuver?
I. Think the question's valid and.
Yeah, you know what's the old.
Um. So through the chair to members of council, so the identification, um. It's just a mutual identification clause for the exercise of the agreement. Right, so both both sides have agreed to hold, to identify the other. Hold each other harmless just as a part of the agreement, relatively common, uh, amongst like a. Nonprofit with uh. With agreements with the municipality, but it it just agreed to hold each other harmless and reduce your illegal exposure from. Each one or actions of the other. But there's no real specific uh. Reason why we've included identification clauses on that side.
Yeah, I just don't understand why we would have to identify them, understand why they would want to identify us. Doesn't make sense to me. That would give me really a reason.
To the chair, they, I I don't have a a very specific reason why we would have objected that. That's more of just a point of play to agreement for uh identifying each other for nonprofits. Uh, but it's. You know, for the uh. The association exercising their rights under the agreement for uh, and it's just to protect them. To protect them as a nonprofit organization as well.
All right. Thanks. Um, did we get a recommended action consensus? With that, you. Trevor? Any more questions or comments? Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm sorry to keep opening a lot of, but. Do we have agreements of this length? Comparable length with any other organizations in the community?
So through the chair, the rest of the committee, I couldn't answer that sitting here right now, just not familiar enough with all of the agreements that we have. Um, in the town, so you can get that information back to you and make sure we're included when we come. Back to council like this, we are directed to do that.
Nicholas, please.
Thank you, and through the chair to administration, uh, when you bring that back, uh. I'd be interested in uh, in all, or knowing if we do this agreement now, a ten year agreement, they still have. Uh, some time left on their existing agreement. Would we be resetting the clock? To to now and the ten years start at the new agreement time, so it's. It's effectively uh the existing agreement plus. Some.
Thank you through the chair, the rest of the committee, we may replace the old, the current existing agreement with a new agreement. So the two years would be lost and we set, yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, um, we'll move to the vote if we could. Jen? And I believe we have the vote up, that group. Hey, please look for, yes. Will these. Council chambers. All right, looks like we've passed the meeting. The motion unanimously. Dave, that being the case, we're going to move to um. The council reports, if we could, Joan.
Oh, thank you, Chair. So um, last week I participated in a very small way in seniors week. And um, when I met with the seniors, they're very vocal, they. Certainly are into what's happening in Hinton and what they would like to see happen, and they let me know. I also attended a attraction and retention committee meeting. And that's it, sir.
Okay. Uh, Nicholas.
Thank you through the chair to committee. Last week I attended F C M in Calgary. It was a. Good opportunity for myself, counselor Taylor and counselor. Chambers to uh liaise with municipal leaders from across the country. Uh, and see what our our federal organization is lobbying for with uh higher levels of government, and I can tell you that. Healthcare, housing, right across the board, concerns for municipalities from coast to coast to coast. Uh, and F C M's big push this year is on. Uh. Pushing a new municipal growth framework with the federal government. Uh, and moving our deal within Confederation into the twenty first century. Uh, it sounds like F C M's got a great plan and uh hopefully they have some successful lobbying efforts. Thank you.
Trevor? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I do, I attended a few events for seniors week last week. Uh, unfortunately, I was out of town for half of the week, but. Um, I gotta say, the events were that I tend to be well attended. Um, and uh, I gotta say, you know, Randy leaving that position, he, there's some big shoes to fill. Uh, with seniors week, um, you know, when I look around other communities, um, they. They've increased their amount of seniors week events because of our community and Randy's efforts, um, you know, so kudos to that. Um, I got a B B O C uh meeting coming up this week, um, so on the agenda this week is to finalize the wayfinding, um. We're also looking to recruit another member uh to our group. We had our digits representative resign, so that's out there, so it's on Facebook, so hopefully we get some. Some uh applicants. Um, and the other part of the agenda is looking to the future, um, doing a bit of a strat plan moving forward. We're going to take the summer off. But uh, we're going to uh talk about this week, what is to come in September and moving forward, so. Uh, that's a, uh, I'm looking forward to that discussion. Um, last all important, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Brad.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, I'll go. I attended the seniors lunch and it was well organized and uh. Um, you're gonna miss uh Randy, I agree with that. Uh, attended the F C M. A couple of things of note that maybe we, I thought that we should start maybe thinking about. Is at the trade show, there was a guy that's got this piece of equipment for measuring particulate matter. So a particulate matter with uh smoke in our community, those measurements come from Environment Canada and their nearest measuring station, Edison. So whether we get it from something like this or we get it from our Athabasca Watering Station. Something maybe look so we can get more accurate uh particulate level uh. Assessments for activities for people who are outside drinking smoke. And then they mentioned during some of the sessions about some of these uh funds, federal funds that are available for uh. People to get to do a hundred homes in their community to do um, to to do um. Bring it, make them more energy efficient, so a lot of communities are getting those kind of funds, so they're going to send some information on that, and we could. Benefit from that, because some of our homes are uh. Are old and probably need that. And then there was a lot of time for lots of uh discussions, we were sharing issues with Yowhead County, Edison, and a lot of other communities. Thank you, Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Enjoy.
So I just wanted to ask you, the um, energy. Conversations that you have there, was that in conjunction with the C E I P that Alberto Muniz is doing?
No, this was a federal program with the federal government.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Um. Uh, Jordan, please.
Thank you, Chair, nothing to report.
Uh, Trevor?
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity during the report, uh, and Chief is here, so, um. Something that has come to attention from some community members. We're seeing a lot more, obviously, activity with the nice weather, and one thing they've noticed, a lot more motorcycles out there. I don't know if it's gas braces or whatever. However, the motorcycles that they are commenting on are extremely dangerous right now. This speeding that's been happening. Um, they swear they saw one going through, uh, by Walmart there, got to be a hundred and twenty miles an hour. It was just flying through and went through the red light, and quite frankly, I hear them all through the night and, uh, quite frankly, through my house, so. I just wanted to bring awareness to that, because uh, and I know traffic, it's none of the things, full by law and, or for protect services and the R C P, but. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, and I just saw it yesterday too, um. Uh, young people on their bikes, not paying attention uh, to the road. Uh, ways, uh, and the rules of it, three of them just not even looked, went right in front of the car. The car had to stop, like, I don't know, like, I know other communities do bike rodeos, we do positive ticketing, um, things like that, but. I've just seen more and more, just not paying attention. It's like they're, they own the road and, you know, it's, the, the drivers have to watch for them, so. Is there, I, I thought I saw a positive ticket program starting up in Hinton, is that, uh, did I see that wrong or?
Uh, through the chair, I met with uh, this staff sergeant today. And they are starting a positive ticket program. They just got the tickets. There is no planned bike rodeos. Okay. Possibly look at that for, for next year. I, I can mention it to the staff sergeants as well.
Yeah, I just don't want to see anything happen. I've just seen more and more bikes out from here. And we've always said bikes just seems a little more. Flipping about what the, the rules of the road, that's all, so, yeah.
And uh, through the chair, and I thank you for the information about motorcycles. I, I too have heard them. But I'll bring that to the attention of the detachments as well as our.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, um. With that, uh, we come to the closed session part, uh, Trevor?
We like to move to the own closed session with a five minute break.
All right, that sounds fine. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, we're in closed session now.